I do have a question about just.
Would like to make comments during the upcoming Common Council meeting. There are blue cards up at the podium or in the back. Please fill those out and Mr. Gallow will be around and collect them if you have any comments at the comments and suggestion center or for the public hearing.
What is this for? How many people have to sign? What if I don't? I'm closing at 10:00 AM tomorrow. I'll look at it in a minute. I just, I have a couple of questions. I'm cutting checks, so I'm pretty sure now.
So they'd have that thing down.
That costs me a lot. At least I have some funding now. Are we ready?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, the City of Oconomok Common Council for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
If you'd all please rise, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'll roll call, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski. Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Zaffel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
On to the public hearing, public hearing for Olympia Fields Plan Development, Mr. Riffle.
So this matter was filed long ago because of the fact that you have all these notice requirements to get into place, to get before the Plan Commission and then get to the Common Council. Before we start this, I'm pleased to announce that the sale of our property to One Guard is finalized and we now have $2.5 million in that tiff coffer. So you recall back to when we did the, you know, started this tid. The project plan contemplated that they would come forward with a total plan once they acquired that property. And they were trying to get in advance of acquiring the property, actually, because they had a lot of interest in acquiring some of the lots that could possibly be created. So they went through the process and they went to the Plan Commission with a plan that at that time was what they thought would be reality. Between then and now, they have, and they have actually gotten different interests in terms of how they would sell certain portions of the property. It would affect how they would divide the property and would affect the project plan. So I think two weeks ago, they asked the city to remove this after the Plan Commission and before tonight, to remove this from the agenda because they're, in their mind, they have some suitors that will be, make this a really, really good, a better project and more exciting project for the city. So it kind of would be pointless to go forward with a proposed plan that went before the Plan Commission that is no longer what they proposed to do. Now, I have heard from some older persons or I've seen some, not, I haven't heard, but I've seen some concern from the older persons that they, you know, they kind of hit, got hit blindsided by the fact that this was coming off. And we had discussion with some of the staff and I was in a, you know, I come in on Tuesdays, right? So I had sat down with the, with the staff people and they say, you know what? Absolutely right. If this happens again, we have to make sure as soon as we know that there's something that's this important, that's coming off the agenda or we think it's come off the agenda. And actually, you're going to make that decision tonight because you can go forward with a public hearing if you want, but there's nothing to present. But in the future, the idea is to make sure that you're, as soon as staff knows that something's not going forward, that you would be notified of that. And so I think that hopefully will assuage some concerns that the council would otherwise have. So because you have to go through a publication process and spend money to put something on the agenda for a public hearing and because it's on the agenda tonight, to avoid the expense of going forward, the proposal from the staff is to suggest that you put this over to a date and time certain, and if you do that tonight, you don't have to go through that time and expense. I don't know for sure what the recommendation from One Guard is in terms of that timing. I think it is the second meeting in January.
Correct, January 18th.
Okay. So if you would concur with staff, the recommendation would be, we don't hold the public hearing tonight, we don't open it because then we would have to, it's a nightmare. And there's nothing to talk about. I mean, there's not going to be a proposal. There would be a proposal on the 18th that would include these new developments and hopefully they will go through. But the proposal would be to adjourn this public hearing to the 18th of January at 7:00 PM and that way we don't have to go through the process of.
7:30.
7:30, I'm sorry. I wish it was 7:00. 7:30. We would not have to go through the process of publication again.
As a point of order, if we adjourn this, it's the same public hearing based on the same proposal approved by the Planning Commission. We don't want to adjourn it.
No.
They can change it.
Yes.
Even though it's been approved by the Planning Commission.
Yes.
It doesn't have to go back in front of the Planning Commission again.
No.
Okay. Fair enough.
Also, a comment for council, I do have two cards from people that would like to comment on this. You're welcome if you decide to adjourn the meeting. Those comments can just be in the public comment section. So the people that made the effort to come tonight, I want to make sure that you're heard if you still want to talk about it. So that's one of the options unless I need to be corrected.
We, we're not going to open up public comment tonight. It would be inappropriate under 6223 of the Wisconsin statutes. Sorry if people came here, it's just, but you're on notice that you can come back if the Common Council adjourns this to date and time certain.
So you're saying they can't make just a comment?
No.
And suggestions?
No. They have to come back, no.
Item six.
Yeah, you can so long as we don't open up the, it would be more appropriate to do it and do it during the, but you can talk about anything during public comment, doesn't have anything to do with this agenda item.
So to answer your.
Yeah, you can talk about anything you want.
Okay. I just want to make sure people make efforts to come and during that one section of our agenda, you can talk about anything and that's up to you if you so wish. Alderman Kavieski.
I'm in favor of moving this to the date and time certain as described, but I also am in favor of re-notification to the public of the new date and time certain. I think it's appropriate to make sure that that communication is put out and there is not an assumption that those who may want to attend would have gleaned that information based on tonight's meeting, so.
Yes, Alderman Kavieski, you would have the typical public notice, there won't be Class III public notice again, but we always would notice, so that would cover that concern.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Did he actually make a motion?
I think I heard Alderman Kavieski.
Okay, okay. Just making sure.
Motion and a second to move this, postpone this and move this to January 18th, making sure we still get notification. Any further comments?
One, one quick question.
Yes.
Whose responsibility is it to issue the notice of postponement as directed and who directs it? Who directs it?
The clerk will give notice of the next meeting and it will include public hearing, Olympia Fields Plan Development.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
We'll move on to approval of meeting minutes for December 7th, 2021.
So moved, Zaffel.
Second, Ellis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Onto comments and suggestions from citizens, I have two blue cards. If anyone else would like to make a public comment on any topic, we'll call you up if you please state your name, your address and where you live and you'll have about three minutes. It's not a two-way discussion, it's an opportunity for you to share your viewpoint with the council. I have Julie Bowen. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I did prepare some comments and it did pertain to the Olympia Fields development. My three children and I live near that area and I wanted to start with a question for all of you. Did you know that childhood obesity has tripled since the 1970s? Did you know that our life expectancies are decreasing? Are you wondering what in the world this has to do with a public hearing? Well, it does have a lot to do with a public hearing because my understanding is that the proposed change in zoning would increase the number of buildings, including three fast food restaurants, and it would decrease green space. So what we're saying as a community is that we value fast food and pavement and we don't value green space and open space. So no wonder our children are facing obesity and shortened lives. The motto here, actually, before I go on to my next point, I want to say, have you noticed that all the fast food restaurants in this town have help wanted signs? Literally every single one says, they're begging people to come and work there. So it'd be totally different if we weren't trying to cram more restaurants into this area if we already didn't have a lot of fast food restaurants that are understaffed. So the next point I wanted to make is that the motto here in Oconomok is life comes naturally. I don't think making this change is consistent with that motto. I think what would be consistent with the motto is having more, more green space. And what I'm referring to in particular is the existing trees in that development area, especially along the Summit Avenue corridor. They're 40 to 50-year-old red pine trees and scotch pine trees. They're really beautiful, they're valuable and inside city limits, older trees are a very important resource. That corridor would be kept beautiful and nice looking. And if you think about it, as you come into Oconomok from the south, you've got those really pretty oak trees in the Past Farms area. And then if you kept some of the trees in the west, you'd have a very nice welcoming corridor into Oconomok. So in summary, the points I wanted to make here tonight is that we need more green space in Oconomok, not less. We should continue to live by the motto that life comes here naturally. And also, I think we need to think about what's actually important to us and what kind of a legacy are we leaving our children? Are we making the world a better place? And also, with all of the electronic communications that we have out there, wouldn't it have made sense to put out like on the website that this was being postponed? I mean, I think it would have just been considerate to people. So thank you very much for listening to my comments. I appreciate your time and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Matt Cudney?
I have three items before the council tonight and I'm just available for any questions or comments, so that's all I wanted to say. It's number eight A and nine C and D.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? If not, we're going to move on to item seven, consent.
The gentleman that was just up there, who, who are you? Are you the developer? Are you the developer for Arrow? Okay, okay.
Viridian Homes.
Oh, you're Viridian, okay, sorry. You maybe come to one of the meetings, I just didn't recognize you, so. Yeah.
Thanks. Consent agenda items, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I'd like to remove the treasurer's report.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, if I can entertain a motion for consent and agenda items A and B.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to the next item, treasurer's report, treasurer's report and financials. Alderman Rosick.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions and then a few quick comments about this and an explanation of why I pulled it out and why I'm going to vote against the vouchers today. First, I've asked Lori if there's a way that we could do this P card. Our P card is huge and I really think it would be helpful for us, and Lori and I talked about this offline, if we could do the P card in such a fashion that we could see it by department, I think it'd be easier for us to kind of dig into what's going on with the P cards because that's kind of our job is to just kind of monitor this and watch this. The other reason I pulled this out is there are a significant segment of P card spending related to library programming in this section. I asked our library director during the budget cycle to meet with me and to start discussing some of the programming. There were significant programming increases last year despite the fact that we had other groups that completely stayed steady. And I think it's important for us to kind of keep the library on notice of that. There's also significant book spending and I, I think as far as the library goes, there's things that occur and this is one of the reasons I'm voting against this. And, you know, these things are always tough to bring up because you don't want to make things super political, but I dropped books off there and I was there looking at just the new book shelving we bought for the kids' books and I thought they looked great and they had a lot of books out. The first book I saw when I went to the growing up section said, are you a boy or are you a girl? In a book meant for three and four and five-year-olds. Inside the book was a lot of various content that I found very offensive and I thought should not be given to children, including the end that says, do you want to play with Tiny? Tiny is the name of this individual. Does it matter if Tiny is a boy or girl? Should Tiny be allowed to play football or dress as a fairy? What would you ask Tiny if you met them? We continue to fund the library and yet the library continues to buy books and to promote agendas that are not consistent with our community, not consistent with my values, and they're spending my money to put books like that on the shelves for kids. So I will be voting against the voucher for that reason and I expect an answer because I've made other complaints about this type of what I consider propaganda in our library. It does not reflect our standards, it's not what I want my money spent on.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I won't vote against this just because we have obligations, we have payroll obligations and if we all voted against this, it would be basically to shut down all of these things for this month. Is there a way in which you would like to?
Well, this was my only, right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that, Karen. I, I, this is for me kind of an objection to this.
I understand, okay.
Kind of the only way I could figure out how to do it. I've asked Betsy to talk to us about the programming. She just keeps spending money on programming and keeps spending money on books and this is the kind of books that are coming into our library and I think it's offensive.
I know, okay. I would still, I will be voting for the vouchers, but I thank you for.
Need to address the issue, is what you're saying.
Yes, I thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Alderman Kavieski.
Is the vote for the vouchers an all or nothing or can there be items pulled out of the vouchers for approval or disapproval?
That was my question.
Dan?
Yeah, let me talk to you because the voucher report is a report of things that have been paid. They've been paid through our purchasing policy. These are goods received, goods paid for. The report really doesn't, it, it's a report. You approve it because that, all that means is I showed it to you, you read it and looked at it, but all of the purchases have been appropriately, you know, brought forward.
Given, given that.
Already paid for.
Given, given that, I wanted a chance to bring this up, this seemed like an appropriate spot to bring it up. I will vote for the vouchers given the fact that it's already stuff we purchased.
Right.
But I, I hope that the library's on notice that I'm, it's been two and a half months since we voted on the budget and I've heard nothing.
Alderman Ellis.
So you mean to tell me that are ye or nay is really not for anything?
Yeah, it, it's on the consent, it's, it's on the consent agenda. It is, really, it is, you have been given an opportunity to review the purchases of the city for the month.
Regardless if we review them or not, if we, if we feel as though they're not conducive to, can, can I finish this?
Yeah.
Alderman Mulder?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I thought you stopped. Sorry, Kevin.
Okay, let me start again. I feel that if something is not conducive to what we feel is good for the city, whether it be safety, whether it be our kids, whether it be something along those lines, that we should see this prior to the check being cut than after the check being cut because the milk is already spilt. And at that point, what really is, are ye or nay means nothing, it's meaningless. So I, I, wow. That, that's eye-opening, that, that concerns me a heck of a lot.
Matt, did you have something? I mean, I can talk to you, but go ahead.
I fundamentally disagree with that argument. We are, we set the budget and we hire professional people who are professionally reviewed and managed by a professional staff to do the job to the best of their ability and not to question whether a book or not, I'm sure I can find something offensive at the library, I'm sure I can find a program I don't support, I probably could find something through Park and Rec that I don't think we should be offering. Nothing comes to mind. Our job is not to sit here and look at every dollar that the city spends. Our job is to make sure that the city is operational and that we have quality people in place to run the city on our behalf, on the mayor's behalf, and more importantly, on the citizens' behalf. And I don't, for us to approve the literally thousands and thousands of expenditures that we have at Laurelburgs and at Amazon and that, you name it, across the US would be, is preposterous. We need to be, that, that's how we put a division between staff and council, that's not how we work collaboratively to make sure we get the best outcomes. So I'm, I, I obviously will be signing this and I will, I am stringently against trying to put a policy in place in which we review every single expenditure prior to paying it.
I just wanted to say that we did just recently review our purchasing policy.
Right.
And all of the expenditures in that report follow the purchasing policy.
Alderman Ellis.
My concern is not that and my concern is not micromanaging. If you know me well enough, you'll understand that I don't like to micromanage. I have all the respect and the confidence that the individuals that we have here are doing an excellent job. Hey, Oconomok's been around longer than I've been born, so I'm okay with that. But what really concerns me is that now and then, something like this happens and to hear that, at the end of the day, if Matt had not brought that up, what would have happened next? Could it have been another book about something that fundamentally and morally, as far as I'm concerned, is going to permeate throughout our little piece of the world here? I do have a problem with that.
Yeah, and.
That's me, okay? And regardless if it's you or anyone else, I don't care. That's me.
And, and I understand and honestly, this is an issue that should be taken up with the city administrator and the department head. Because the purchase itself fits within the policy.
I think it's, I think it's a good example for all of us that if you have an issue, no matter what with the department or you don't get the response that you want, please go to the city administrator, that's his job. Because that way these, we can get into all the analysis, look at all the details and then try to have an action on something going forward. So now with a full-time city administrator in place, let's take where we are today and let's just move this forward and on whatever issue we have. Alderman Kavieski.
I agree, Mayor. It's not the council's job to line item each book, but it, it is within the council's purview to, to help establish some policy associated with that kind of material. And I know Alderman Rosick and myself brought up questionable material to you a while ago. This is the first questionable publication at the library. So I think it was brought up to, to you as a mayor to have those conversations and you said that you would address it and apparently it's still yet to be addressed, so I hope it does get addressed. And I'm not, I'm not calling out specific, I'm just, you'd mentioned there's policy. We go to the city administrator and/or the mayor because that's, that should be the process and that was done and I look forward to some action being taken with that.
As noted, I will put this high on the priority when all the department heads are back in January and I will also get the meeting with Alderman Rosick.
Thank you, Mark.
Like to entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the financials for November 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto Plan Commission items, Consider Act on Certified Survey Map for the Arrowood subdivision, dividing one lot into two lots located at 9740 Valley Road.
Good evening. We have a certified survey map on the agenda this evening for a land division off of Oconomok Parkway as well as Valley Road. This is for the Arrowood subdivision. This divides the site into two lots. If approved tonight, there would be one lot being 33 acres and one being approximately 230 acres. The, the 33-acre lot would be Phase 1 of the project, that would consist of the first 40 lots and then the remaining lands would be for 263 lots that we've already approved with the preliminary plat. The lot line that divides these two lots does follow the preliminary plat lots, I've reviewed that myself and checked it. There's no technical concerns with the certified survey map, it's been reviewed by staff. The Plan Commission took a look at this certified survey map and recommended approval on December 8th. So this, really, the purpose of this is a financing tool. The, the company has two different divisions and they'll, the first phase will be bought by one arm of the company and they'll, they'll develop that into the first 40 lots and they'll hold it into a holding company until the first phase is completed and then they'll, they'll move forward. Matt Cudney did speak earlier tonight, he's here from Viridian Homes. If you have any questions regarding this and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for Mr. Gallow or Mr. Cudney? Alderman Zaffel?
Oh. With this change, nothing, with this plat, none of the actual amount of homes out there has changed, correct?
That's correct. The number of lots is remaining exactly the same, this is just dividing it for, to start the first phase.
Ten-four.
Alderman Zaffel.
No issues with this moving forward as Alderman of the district. I know neighbors came out here and spoke and residents of Summit. I just want to remind the city administrator and Public Works the need to talk about Parkway and opening up the Oconomok Parkway after that meeting. I've heard that a lot from my constituents and I mean a lot. That is a big priority for the fourth district to make it happen. Once this project goes through, there's some excitement, but the need to open up the Parkway is there.
Like to entertain a motion?
Move, Kavieski.
Second, Zaffel.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Onto Consider Act on the Extraterritorial Certified Survey Map Dividing One Lot Into Two Lots Located Approximately North 76, West 36300 Saddle Brook Lane in the Town of Oconomok.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another certified survey map for a land division. This one happens to be in the town of Oconomok, not in the city. It falls within our extraterritorial plating jurisdiction area. It is to take one lot divided into two. One will be a two-acre lot with the existing home on it. That is being rezoned by the town as we speak. The remaining 34 acres of Lot 2 is to go into a farmland preservation program and they'll, they have horses out there on this one. So Plan Commission did review it. So Plan Commission did review it back on December 8th and recommended approval of the land division.
This is extraterritorial zoning stuff again for us?
Land division.
Oh, it's a land division?
Plating, not zoning.
Oh, okay, okay.
Like to entertain a motion?
Rosick, so moved.
Second, Ellis. Any further discussion? Questions? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye. Onto new business. Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2999, awarding contract for design engineering of Village Green Restrooms. Mr. Hefner?
Good evening again. On November 2nd, the common council approved sending out an RFP for the Design Engineering Services for Village Green Restrooms. RFPs were advertised in November. We received three proposals. Our selection committee, which was consisting of Mark Frye, myself, Chad Brown from our Park and Rec Board, Sarah Nindman and Jason DeVorek did reviews and scoring of the proposals based on the categories you have before you. Based on that, R.O. Everly, it's called, pronounced, R.O. Everly Architects scored the highest in our ranking system, certainly in past similar experience, staff qualifications, and contract cost. I have done reference checks on them with a number of municipalities in Manona and Wanakee. They check out very well. They think they're actually, this is kind of their sweet spot for design. What we've also tasked them to do besides the normal design engineering deliverables is develop two concept designs that we'll be bringing back for a couple different places. Certainly Committee of the Whole, we want to do that at, and Architectural Commission, so we can narrow it down to the best choice and best, I guess, aesthetics. And then they're also going to be providing cost estimates, both construction and maintenance as we go through this process, because right now, we're not sure where numbers are all going to land on this project. On December 13th last week, the Parks and Recreation Board discussed and unanimously approved the selection of R.O. Everly Architects for the Design Engineering Services for Village Green. The contract would be a cost of, not to exceed contract, of $29,650 plus a 10% contingency. So a total of $32,615. The funds would come from previously budgeted park impact fee funds. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Like to open it to council for any questions for Mr. Hefner. Alderman Shellpepper?
No question. Just glad that we're getting this through. This is a need from the downtown, Doba, from the residents. It's a, it's a big deal. I'm glad we're getting it pushed through. I know we looked at waiting on the property to the north, but I think it's good. Again, we have something up front, firm commitment. Let's keep pushing it through. And not to mention, you know, there's, there's strings attached to that property to the north. So we know what we're dealing with up front here, and just, just glad we're going to get it through and appreciate you guys taking a look at it, so.
Alderman Zappel?
Echo Alderman Shellpepper's comments there. I was down in that area on Friday of the German market, and I saw the need firsthand down there, and I know that they enjoy the business side, et cetera, of people walking in and coming out with a drink, but I think they would enjoy not having that many people walking in, just to use the restroom, not getting a drink to come out. And talking to a lot of constituents, they are excited. They want to know, is it going to be open by the Fourth of July fireworks? Is it going to be open by the parade? They're excited for it to happen. So I look forward to this moving forward.
Other comments? Alderman Rosick?
I think I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this one. This, you know, I don't know how many bathrooms are ultimately going to be there, but this isn't the panacea for us, right? Whenever there's large events like Beer Garden, German Christmas Market, you have to put in bathrooms. I also, if we're, if we're going to move forward to bathrooms here, I don't want to spending another $300,000 or $400,000 on bathrooms next door. If that project does go through, that to me would be absolutely foolish and a complete waste of money. I'd rather, if that project goes through on the other side, AJ's, I call it AJ's project. If AJ's project goes through, let's get that tiff closed quicker and not put more bathrooms there. I think maybe if it's combined with, you know, a warming house or something, it might be different. Are we going to remove the porta potties by the boat launch then, once this bathroom's in?
No, the plan would be able to keep that one there just for the boat launch activity.
But we're going to continue porta potties downtown on the boat launch, even though someone could simply walk? I, I don't get that. If, and if we're, if we're liking porta potties right on the edge of the lake, right by the boat launch and the kids playground, why do this entire, and I'm just, I'm conceptually discussing this. Why do $300,000 and bathrooms there, not just do some more shielded porta potties in that spot to alleviate some of the concerns?
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Isn't it an obligation when you have a boat launch to have certain things like trash and restrooms? I thought that was part of the obligation.
It is a requirement. I guess what I can research is, is there a distance for that requirement? I don't really know that answer.
Yeah, I mean, if we're, I, I'm probably voting in favor of this one. If we're, I know we're working on some other things back there to really clean up the back there, and I think that's great. That, if we're going to put the bathrooms there, we need to figure out a way to get rid of those porta potties next to the lake. They're disgusting and they look like, and then no one's going to use them. They're going to go to the nicer ones, right?
Alderman Kavieski?
It's a, it's a good point, Alderman Rosick. We've had conversations about this, and everybody has said, this is not an either-or. This is not a, if the bathrooms go where it's currently being proposed, that they won't go to the potential new development to the north, or it won't happen potentially beside City Hall. So the, the comment about if this moves forward, that you wouldn't support the bathrooms to the north is concerning to me because it's the, the first time I heard a division associated with that. It's always been or the merry, it's, it's a both-and, not an either-or. And that, that does bring some concern to me. There is a need for bathrooms. There has been that need for bathrooms there for a long time, and that's why that money has been carried over for the last five years.
Seven years.
Seven years. So I would just caution doing an either-or and being presumptive in that this would be the best location for those bathrooms as an addition to. I've, I've still yet to hear what the actual, you know, and again, this is not calling anybody out, but what the actual public-private partnership and benefit of that looks like. This is going to be a public bathroom on public property at public expense, and it will help the private entities in the downtown alleviate the traffic for the use of their bathrooms without those individuals purchasing something at their store. There is benefit to that. But I, I'm going to be in favor of moving this forward to see what the construction is. But there's a lot to come in the next few months on this, and it would be nice for constituents throughout the community to participate in having a bathroom there for the Fourth of July or anytime we have a major event. We are an event-driven downtown, and to support that in the downtown, I think is very important.
Any other comments? Alderman?
Very briefly.
Rosick?
So this is banner night. I've been cautioned twice. I appreciate the cautioning. But I'm not convinced, I'm going to vote for it because I think it does, we probably need something there. I'm not convinced that long-term, and maybe this is just my, that those bathrooms are going to be used all the time as much as, you know, when it's cold out, when it's snowy, when it's yucky in there, when they've been peed all over the place after 2:00 in the morning from a bar night, doesn't get cleaned up. I just don't see a lot of people using them on a regular basis, and they're going to still go into Roots or Thier Mall or North 48 because it's right there and they're going to be clean and warm. So I, I'm not convinced it's, it's going to be this panacea that we're all imagining and that all the problems are going to be alleviated with the addition of these $300,000 other bathrooms. With that being said, I guess it's worth a try. We've got the money set aside. We have budgeted for it for five years. And then if we get those bathrooms and the AJ bathrooms and the 517 bathrooms and the Fowler bathrooms, instead of being a Fowler Lake Walk, we can call it the Bathroom Walk. You'll be able to pee multiple times on that Lake Walk.
Comments or questions for Mr. Hefner?
Couldn't resist.
We do have a policy on naming rights.
Do we have a policy on naming rights? That was good. I'd like to entertain a motion? So moved, Ellis.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Zappel?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
And to you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Duffy, we have Consider Act on Resolution 21-R3001, accepting a destination marketing grant, authorizing matching tourism funds, and approving an agreement with the Lake Country Dock Hounds for, for community promotional scoreboard project. Mr. Duffy?
Several pieces there. Really, this is the start of, of a conceptual project. Back in September, Department Administration opened up funding for destination marketing organizations to be proactive in promoting themselves as communities. As our community's, community continues to grow, we sought out the opportunity and started a dialogue with the Lake Country Dock Hounds with that facility being built right on the interstate, because we as a community have never been able to be proactive in promoting ourselves on the state, on the interstate at that location. We submitted a grant to the Department Administration for a public-private partnership with the Lake Country Dock Hounds. Given their location on 94 and the potential that we would explore is to be able to promote Oconomowoc, visit Oconomowoc, the activities, assets that we have as a community on the backside of that scoreboard. We were awarded $47,300 to be able to do that. What I'm asking for you to do, one, is to accept that grant. Two, in our dialogue with the Lake Country Dock Hounds, and if you've done any research on large advertising on the interstate, large billboards come to a cost of about $4,000 to $5,000 a month. We had talked to the Dock Hounds and said, if we could reach a long-term agreement, a 10-year agreement, could we contribute $10,000 to you per year upfront, be able to have such an agreement? So the second level of that is, with the $47,000 from the state, asking the ability to use fund balance from tourism. Currently, tourism's fund balance is about $118,000. And as we watch this year, we are not going to need, and I think it's safe to say this, we are likely not going to need any of the extra money from the city because room tax is up this year, be able to raise that dollar amount to $100,000, and then start and initiate the conversation with Mr. Riffel and I to come bring back to you an agreement with the Dock Hounds for such an opportunity to promote our community. That's what the resolution is about.
So I'd like to open up for discussion. Any questions for Mr. Duffy? Alderman Shellpepper?
Trying to visualize how we're actually going to be able to see this from the interstate. Like, it's kind of hard for me to vote on this right now without having any sort of comprehensive understanding. And I'm also wondering, so you say we're going to advertise Oconomowoc. I mean, isn't there a big green sign provided to us by the state that says Oconomowoc, like right there?
Right. But do we have the opportunity to promote what's going on in our community? Any of our events? If you watch what we're doing for downtown events, for other community events, we would have the opportunity to potentially do that. That's what we want to explore.
I'm hesitant, just from a, you know, I mean, and so I'm, I'm all about fiscal responsibility, and that's what I've been trying to preach since day one on this council. I've always tried to take a hard look at the spends that we're having. Spending money to advertise Oconomowoc in Oconomowoc doesn't come off to me as being a fiscal responsible thing on, on the face value when you have a sign that says Oconomowoc literally right before that, and we still don't...
Fifty thousand, and my only comment to that is with 50,000 cars a day, those are not just people from Oconomowoc.
Right, but they're passing the signs already that say Oconomowoc, so...
So, but this isn't a fixed sign?
Well, we would like to see a digital sign. We need to work through that with the Department Transportation Department.
That's one of the things that it would advertise, different things, should we be able to work through that agreement? It wouldn't just be up there saying, "Oconomowoc."
Well, it's, it's, it seems pretty preliminary right now. There needs to be more detail, so I, I'm, you know, I'm not in favor of passing any money onto this until there's, there's more of that, so.
Alderman Kavieski?
I think the digital sign is, is the optimal, that would allow for the promotion of the various events and, and highlights within the Oconomowoc community that would be the draw. If it's a static sign that just says, "Welcome to the city of Oconomowoc," you kind of know where you're getting off, the freeway, so I could agree with you on that. It doesn't sound like there is clarity and direction for a digital sign as opposed to a...
You've got to work through the DOT.
Yep.
That's the proposal we sent to the Department Administration, was a digital...
So the, the question I would have is, obviously, I don't think anybody is going to necessarily object to the grant. I don't know, but whatever. Does a grant and the additional funds from tourism tie together? Are they required to, to be together? Or is that something that we can have come back when we know if it's going to be a digital sign or not?
We could have negotiations with the Dock Hounds if we could do a shorter length of an agreement type of a situation. That's how I would have to approach it.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
I am concerned about the visibility. Are we guaranteed that this is going to be visible by people and going that fast and seeing German Christmas Market, whatever, you know, last weekend in November type of thing?
Well, again, we're going to cite it based on what we can do out at that location, work with the sign company, work with the Dock Hounds, and establish it based on that initiative. Just as you do when you pass the state fair, just when you do when you pass Miller Park.
As someone, I'm assuming you guys have done some kind of a visual, gone out there and based on how...
We are working with the sign company that they're currently working with.
Alderman Douglas?
Yeah, I mean, that's my biggest concern is the location. I mean, where that is, you're pretty much getting people to see this westbound traffic after they've passed the exit to get off of Oconomowoc. You know, driving that area, I don't think eastbound traffic's going to see it unless they come on the off-ramp and look to the right. And then secondly, who's paying for the sign? Is that our responsibility to pay for the sign?
Likely it'll be the Dock Hounds and then we come to an agreement that we're going to be able to promote ourselves on the sign.
I'd like to see a picture essentially from...
From that location?
Some location of essentially where that third arrow, the one in the middle is, almost pointing where that, the on-ramp enters the interstate, looking back at it to see what's out there to actually see and how high this is going to be.
And just as a reminder for council, remember, tourism dollars have to be spent just on tourism, just so you're aware. Alderman Kavieski?
If, if the sign wasn't to materialize with these contributions for the city promotion, is the Dock Hounds intent to, to make that available to others as an advertising platform? Or is that just going to stay...
Their initial submittal was they would use it for advertising purposes, if they're able to do that.
Alderman Rosack?
Excuse me. Hey, Bob. Well, let me start out with the, I wrote some notes down on this one. We're not going to be the sole advertiser back there, right? Other people, like, we would have an ad go, and then there'd be an ad for Buddies, or then there'd be an ad for...
That would, that would need to be part of the agreement. What I've shared with them is, to our extent, we would like to be out there predominantly.
But not the only.
We would need to reach that in our agreement with them.
If I could, there's also an issue of whether or not you can utilize that sign for off-premise advertising, and we haven't worked through that because it's on-premise. So I don't know if Jason's still here, but I don't think we have, I don't think we've analyzed that completely, but...
That was part of their plans either, to do a big, huge, you know, facing sign. There was a lot of stuff in that plan about light pollution, and there were a lot of concerns in my subdivision about light pollution. This is only going to add to it directly facing homes and the businesses on that side.
I remember that.
Well, I mean, we had specific numbers and specific wattages and stuff too, and for the lights. So to me, the sign probably is a complete nonstarter for that reason. But frankly, you know, I don't want to be cruel. I'm glad we got the marketing grant, but frankly, the marketing grant is a waste of state taxpayer money, and the tourism matching fund is a waste of our money. I just don't, Alderman Shellpepper was right on point. We're advertising Oconomowoc to people getting off on the Oconomowoc exit. I just, I can't fathom how this is going to draw people to Oconomowoc. People are going to go to the Dock Hounds maybe to watch a ballgame. That might be the interesting spot to advertise inside of there, if people come from outside to watch a game, you know, have like signage up inside, like, hey, come to the, you know, fall market this year, come to the German Christmas Market, or whatever, inside of the ballpark where people, you know you have a captive 5,000-person audience facing it. Even the picture that you showed us, Bob, and again, I'm trying, I'm really trying tonight to be focused. I'm having trouble. I'm seeing trees right there, right by the sign, in the picture that you brought to us. So I've got to look at that and say, those trees grow up, are we asking to plant more trees there at some point? And the light pollution, it's just, it's a complete nonstarter for me. I'm an absolute no. There's not enough details about what percentage we're going to have to, we're going to get advertising for. If you want to use the 47,000 for something, go for it. You know, that's already taxpayer money down the drain, as far as I'm concerned.
Other comments? So I'd like to entertain a motion at this point, or not?
Yes, I'll make a motion that the city accepts the designated marketing grant dollars.
Are those marketing grant dollars obligated to the sign?
To double-check, to see if we can transfer it to another project.
Well, if you use it for the sign, use it for the sign.
If they're obligated to the sign or not?
That's what the proposal was as the grant was submitted, so.
So I have a follow-up question.
Yes, go ahead.
So as a motion is made that we accept the grant, if we do accept the grant without it being applied to the sign, it would potentially go back if...
Agreement. They haven't submitted us the agreement yet for the grant.
So maybe we postpone even that portion of it until we know that question?
Well, the agenda item says, "Accept a grant for this purpose." I think that it would be appropriate to vote that up or down, and if you vote it down, ask your economic development director to see if there's another project that you can make an application for, because I'm quite certain that it's earmarked for the funds directed towards a project that you applied for.
Likely, yes.
Would you like to rephrase your motion?
Or withdraw it.
Or withdraw it and start another one?
I'm fine with it being used for, you know, the intended purposes of a sign if that's what we want to do.
So a motion in favor, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Alderman Mulder.
Is that you, Kevin? Or John? Okay, thought John, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a question. What, oh, go ahead.
Alderman Mulder first.
Yeah, I, so Matt, I agree with you here. Now, we're backed into a corner. We can't stop that sign from being put up, so your light pollution can happen. We have $47,000. We can either have our name on that sign, or not have our name on that sign, and the $47,000, we either use it or don't use it. We can choose to add our own $52,000, or we can say, go back and get what you can for $47,000. Are we better off getting a three-year deal for $47,000 on wasted, to your, the way you phrased it, wasted taxpayer money, that we don't really even necessarily, as a council, see value in? Or do we just turn the money back over to the state and it goes to some other project?
I'm voting no. Because I think that money should just go back to the state.
That's where we're at.
Let the state, let it go back to the state.
Alderman Kavieski.
So when the Dock Hounds originally looked at that location, I had some conversation with them in regards to developing a private shuttle to move people from that venue into our downtown. And we're trying to figure out, I've had some meetings with them in regards to if they're going to look at that as their owned shuttle, or an operator dealing with that. There's benefit to the community in moving people from that venue into potentially Olympia, into the downtown, perhaps Farms, without having that traffic congestion and that parking that would be associated with that many people coming into the community. I would love to see some of those dollars, maybe if it's not assigned to the, to the sign, maybe go to help support that in moving economic development and tourism into our downtown and other areas that would benefit from that. So from what I understand, this motion, without you knowing if it can be reallocated, would be dedicated to that sign, the way it's currently being voted on.
Yes.
So.
So we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any further comments and questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Nay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Nay.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Nay.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
The motion doesn't care, but I think, I thank you, Mr. Duffy, for your work. I think if you could work with staff and see if we have some additional options for that, and maybe some different direction. Thank you very much. Onto Consider Act and Approval of Assignment Recapture Agreement, Heirwood Development, LLC to VH Heirwood LLC.
Okay. You will all recall, maybe not, that we had quite the conundrum with regard to the agreements that we had reached way before any of you were older persons, when the sewer was extended down to these areas that were formerly within the town of Summit, now the Villeges Summit. And as it relates to when the incorporation of the town of Summit would occur, that they were going to be detached from the town of Summit and attached to the city of Oconomowoc. And the agreements that were reached, and the, which are rather complicated and interesting, provided that we were going to collect special assessments as people connected and pay the developers. We were sued by one of the two developers, the We Properties. We reached an agreement through court to basically pay them, I think it was a million bucks, to tell them to go away. And then when we collected those assessments, they would pay us. At the same time, Seetman Property, or Seetman Development, who was not part of that lawsuit and was not interested in suing the city, reached an agreement with us and said, okay, well, when we collect the special assessments over time, whether we collect them or not, we'd pay 40%, 45%, whatever it is, over to Seetman. So now, Veridian is in place, and they're acquiring the property, and they are simply interested in standing in the place of Seetman, since they are acquiring all right, title, and interest to that property that includes this particular agreement. The agreement itself that we signed said it is binding on the heirs, successors, and assigns, and we're contractually bound to sign this agreement. So I recommend that you do it.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Rozak.
Second.
Second.
Who's second?
Zappel.
Zappel. Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper. Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas. Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Onto Consider Act, Public Sanitary Sewer and Temporary Sanitary Sewer Construction Easements for Heirwood Development. Mr. Yeller?
Nope. I got this one.
Okay.
The item in the packet tonight, in order to efficiently get sanitary sewer to the Veridian Heirwood Development, it needs to cross through a parcel that sits to the northwest of it, that they do not own. It's owned by Hero Radke and a group of people. They have come to an agreement with them for both a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement. The whole thing has been laid out so that should that parcel develop, that right where the sanitary sewer is, is where we would have a street. So the easement's here tonight because the city will be a party to it. It'll have, it'll be our sanitary sewer that we'll be maintaining, as we do any other public infrastructure. So that's why we're a party on the easement, and that's why it's here tonight. But we are recommending approval of the easement.
Any questions for Mr. Fry? Like to entertain a motion. So moved, Kavieski.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
With no staff reports this evening, are there any comments from Alderman at this time? Alderman Kavieski.
Yeah, I have a couple. Go figure. I'd like to start out with a declaration that I submitted to Mr. Fry and Ms. Conan. I'd like to give a little bit of background in regards to why the declaration came about. I've had conversation with residents in our district that led me to this. Over the last year and a half specifically in education, in our Oconomowoc Area School District, our private schools, our homeschool kids, there have obviously been challenges. And the principals and those who are responsible for the education of our youth really stepped up and stepped forward in focusing on the kids and trying to make sure that the education of those kids were what they delivered. So I, in that conversation, said that I would create a declaration, and that's what I have here. I did drop off copies of the declaration to the Oconomowoc Area School District Office, as well as St. Jerome's, I'll drop one off at St. Paul's, St. Matthew's as well, because it is truly those educators and the youth that they're responsible for that has been incredible to see. If you've seen, for example, and not to necessarily point out just one, but this is just an example, the principal at the Oconomowoc High School, Jason Curtis, interact with those kids. It is pretty amazing. I can't remember my own name some days, and he remembers the name of every kid that walks through that door, and it's a very impressive thing to see. And we do have a member of the school board in the audience, Ms. Andy Schick, who is here representing the school district. Thank you very much for being here and for being here. So I'd like to read this real quick. And declarations, just like proclamations, have these really fun wording to them. Whereas the education and developmental opportunities provided through public and private schools in conjunction with parents and caregivers enhance the lives of the youth of our community. And whereas the challenges associated with providing these critical services have been exacerbated due to the extraordinary circumstances related to the pandemic that started here in 2020. And whereas the leadership shown, school by school, led by principals, parents, and teachers, remain the focus of instruction and well-being of the students who rely on their dedication to prepare them to become productive members of our community and beyond. And whereas, upon review of the efforts of those mentioned, their contributions deserve to be recognized within the city and surrounding communities. And whereas, we move forward together into a new year with hope and continued focus on a bright future for our youth and community, which makes us stronger and a more vibrant place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, I loo Kavieski Alderman for the District, for District Two of the city of Oconomowoc, recognize all those educational leaders, as previously mentioned, with the gratitude of residents represented within District Two and throughout our community, as citizens may choose, dated this 21st day of December 2021. So that is the declaration that is available to anyone who has those leadership positions in those schools. And again, thank you very much for being here to represent the school district. I have a couple other things, and again, I'll try to make it short, but it's the end of the year. And a couple of things to mention, one of which is an employee who is retiring as of January 3rd of 2022, Dan Giraki. He's been an employee of the city of Oconomowoc, a utility, utility as a lineman, leadman, and a foreman. Also has a short run, had a short run at utility manager after he went into the metering and substation area. After 46 years of service, he has decided he had enough. So he is, he is leaving our service on January 3rd, as I mentioned. He has been committed to the city in various ways over the years, providing his time and talent, notably as part of the board for the German Christmas Market. While Dan did not want any celebration as part of his exit, I wanted to take an opportunity to just say thank you to him and for his service. It's not very common anymore for someone to stay with an organization for almost half a century, but Oconomowoc is not a very common place. We wish you all the best as you journey into the next chapters of your life. May you enjoy each page. There's a sense of community and all of that, and there has come up that there is a lawsuit that we're engaged in with some of our surrounding communities, and I don't think council has been brought up to speed as much as I think we probably should be. So I would appreciate that being brought up, whether it needs to be in closed session or wherever that is, due to the nature of that as a policy body. I think we should be notified of legal actions that include the city. So I hope that happens in the beginning of the new year. Lastly, I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and as we begin the new year, a Happy New Year.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Spiegelberg.
I'd just like to wish everyone a blessed Christmas, and may the peace of Christ rule in your hearts through this holiday season and into 2022.
Alderman Ellis.
I also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And my prayer for everyone is that this next year is one of prosperity and one of good health.
Final comments from the mayor is Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Zappel.
Favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a wonderful holiday, everybody.
Stan's beautiful calendar. Love it.